Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the November 5th, 2012 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with an invocation offered by Pastor Bill Tummins of Dover Shores Baptist Church located on Gaston Foster Road in the Dover Shores community in District 2. Pastor Tummins has been the senior pastor at the church since June of this year. Dover Shores Baptist Church will celebrate its 50th birthday in our community, I guess it'd be anniversary rather than birthday, next March. And the church operates the Jim Glenn Food and Clothing Pantry which is open two days a week to help fill the needs of the low-income and disadvantaged in our community. After the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by District 2 Commissioner Tony Ortiz. Would everybody please join me in standing?
We please die your heads as I pray. Dear, infinite, wise, loving Father in heaven, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the countless and generous blessings you have given to us all who live and work in Orlando, the city beautiful. Thank you for the gift of life itself and for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings and missions. Thank you for our daily nourishment and for our shelter from the rain, the heat, and cold. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing the responsibility of leadership. Thank you for the freedom we embrace. Father, your scriptures say that we must, as citizens, all obey the governing authorities placed over us. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city employee, for our Chief of Police, his officers, and in particular, this assembled council. I ask, Father, that you would graciously and abundantly grant them wisdom to govern among the conflicting interests and issues of our times. I ask that you give them a sense of welfare and empathy for the needs of our people and the business community of Orlando. I ask that you give them a keen thirst for justice tempered by mercy. I ask that you give them confidence in what is good and proper shaped by meekness. I ask that you give them courage to stand for deep convictions, sheltered in humbleness. I ask that you give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement and debate. I ask that you provide personal peace in their lives and unity within their homes and families. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Can you please give them assurance of what would be pleasing to you and would best benefit those in work and live in our beloved Orlando? It's in the name of my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ that I make this prayer to you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Pastor. Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call and roll my determination of quorum please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Linham.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up for consideration the minutes of the workshop, agenda review, and city council meetings from October 22nd, 2012. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. I've been getting that motion from the right side lately. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's go to presentations, awards and recognitions, and we will start with Marcia who will introduce guests here for Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Day.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's great to see you all. It is my great pleasure to introduce someone who really needs no introduction because his organization, the Coalition for the Homeless of Central Florida, is such a great partner of the cities and works so closely with us on so many important community events, community activities, and services particularly to our residents. But it is my pleasure to introduce to all of you and to our guests, Mr. Brent Trotter, who is the president and CEO, who will make a presentation on the Hunger Awareness Month. Brent?
Welcome Brent, there you are, way in the back.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. It is my pleasure to be here with you today. We wanted to come and of course, you're going to be making a presentation shortly, but if we could jump right ahead, we want to give you an update on the partnership that we have created with the city of Orlando and of course, Orange County government with regard to our Men's Service Center. A little bit of history, Mayor, you were there. You remember back in May of 2009 when we made an announcement that we would be accessing CBG funding in order to be able to build what is now referred to as the Men's Service Center. And I'll just keep going here because we've got some pictures we want to show you. That announcement culminated in February of this year whereby we had the opportunity to break ground. Many of you had the pleasure of being with us there. And I wanted to report to you that the progress of that facility is moving forward. We anticipate the opening of that facility that will allow us to house 250 homeless males to be in August or September of 2013. We had some slides that we were going to show you just to let you know of the progress, but with that said, unless they pop up here in the next couple of seconds, that is my presentation. We wanted to get you some updates on that.
Okay, how about a proclamation instead of a question?
How about? All right.
Whereas the month of November is recognized as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, and more specifically, the week before Thanksgiving is designated National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and whereas each night the Coalition for the Homeless of Central Florida provides food, shelter, and services to over 750 men, women, and children, and whereas the face of homelessness has changed, it's evidenced by the 24% increase in the number of families and 31% increase in the number of children, and whereas the city of Orlando and Orange County government have funded the capital construction of a new men's service pavilion which will open in 2013, and whereas the Coalition for the Homeless of Central Florida and the city of Orlando are joining with communities across America during the week before Thanksgiving to bring greater understanding and awareness to the realities of hunger and homelessness, and whereas the Coalition for the Homeless Supporters Student Organization, city of Orlando employees, and many other caring citizens in Central Florida will turn the town purple on Friday, November 16th to promote awareness of hunger and homelessness and to provide information about ways we can help. Now therefore, I Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando hereby do proclaim Friday, November 16th, 2012, as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Day in the city of Orlando. Brent, where did you go? I was right there. Come down and do a picture with you, but just before I do that, we have a group of students from the Student Government Association at the University of Central Florida, and they've been in City Hall touring, and I had an opportunity to address them earlier today. And one of the questions was, what is the most difficult issue you face as mayor? And I told them dealing with the issue of homelessness was certainly the most difficult because no individual homeless person or family has the same circumstances and providing the much-needed resources is very difficult. And we have more and more people that are being affected by hunger and homelessness because of the economic conditions that we have suffered for the last four years. So students, case on point, in recognizing the good work that the Coalition for the Homeless and the Christian Service Center, which Commissioner Stewart is the executive director of, do in our community. And while we're doing it, students, would you stand up and be recognized?
The degree of homelessness started in Long Regan. Closed down all the state hospitals.
Okay, Marcia, you're up again. And the State of the Downtown address, we talked about how we're going to become or are becoming the most sustainable city in the entire southeast. And today we get an opportunity to shine a light on another great example of great green work that's being done in the city of Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, the Orlando Science Center is one of our city's major cultural assets, really a place that many of our families, children and families appreciate all throughout the year. It has been my great pleasure to represent the city on the Science Center's Board of Directors for several years. Today, it is again a pleasure to introduce the CEO and President of the Orlando Science Center, Joanne Newman, who is here with several board members and senior staff members to make a presentation and a big thank you to you, our city council.
Thank you, Marcia, and Mayor and city Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I did want to just acknowledge a couple of our board members and staff. We've got Robert Finfrock, who owns Finfrock Construction, Stuart Clark, who runs Discovery Cove, and we've got Dennis Lind, who's in charge of engineering for Disney Parks Worldwide. We've got Jeff Stanford, who runs our development and marketing area, and John Malozzi, our CFO, who actually ran the Green Building Initiative project for us. We're really pleased to be able to just give you an update and a final report on this project of which you were so instrumental. It was a $3 million project. It was about two years of a timeline. Six months of that was us assembling a team of experts from the community who helped us put together the request for proposal and helped us vet the companies that bid on the job and in the end, helped us make the final selection. We installed a totally new HVAC system at the Science Center. I think the one interesting fact about that is we went with oil-free compressors. They were all magnetic. We put new cooling towers in. These things were called zero bleed cooling towers, which means all the water, or as much as possible, is recycled. Put a new roof on the Science Center. We were able to move all the old equipment off of the roof and put it down on a loading, ground floor loading dock area. Installed three different solar panel systems. One produces electricity. One of them takes care of the hot water in the building and one is used, it's called a boiler reheat, so it's whenever we need heat in the building, it takes care of that. We put film on all of the major windows, solar film, a full lighting retrofit, used as many LEDs as we could, a lot of compact fluorescents, and also initiated a building-wide recycling program. And also the community can drop off certain items for recycling, electronics and things. We then also did what we think a Science Center should do, and that is created a number of programs and exhibits to help educate the community around the green, what it means to be green, and what you can do in your homes. Okay, that worked, good. And this was a, this was a great example of both public and private partners being involved in supporting the Science Center. Of course, first and foremost, the city of Orlando, we got the stimulus funding block grant from the city. You also helped us secure a loan for the project. Orange County was involved. We got some stimulus funds and through a competitive grant process, we got funding from the Orange County Arts and Cultural Affairs Group. We also had the Walmart Foundation who supported us, the Darden Foundation, Orlando Utilities Commission, and Robert Irvine. Well, this one was, it was a chart that was, showed us, showed our results, and it really has been impactful for us at the Science Center. We've been able to reduce our utility bills. Annually, we were spending about $600,000 a year on utilities. That has dropped down to 270,000. That's a 56% reduction. We also reduced our kilowatt hour usage from about five and a half million down to about two and a half million. That was also a 56% reduction. We've reduced our water consumption by almost 80%, and that's all due to those cooling towers and the recycling. And we did do low-flow toilets as well. And then the last thing we did was we reduced gas usage and it's measured in terms and we reduced that. I think it was around 60%. So the savings have been incredible for us. We were also thrilled to be the first nonprofit in Florida to be able to declare lead gold certification and the first city of Orlando building to get lead gold under the existing building category. So we didn't, we weren't a new construction, obviously, and I have to tell you, it's a lot of work to get that. So I really did want to come today just to give you those final results and to say thank you very much for all of your support and for helping us to be able to achieve those kinds of results.
Get in the back, please.
Okay, I have a few items I would like to briefly update you on. Tomorrow, November 6th, is Commissioner Gray's birthday. That's it? That's it. And we would like to wish you well, the first birthday that you'll be celebrating as a city commissioner, so thought it might be appropriate since we have some good young voices in here to give you a little rendition. So, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Gray. Happy birthday to you. Thank you. Let's have a national election tomorrow. So here's what you thought I was actually going to announce, which is tomorrow is Election Day in Orlando, Florida, and the United States. Who has early voted or voted by absentee already?
Hello.
Good percentage. And who's going to go vote tomorrow?
Eee.
All right. Whoever you're voting for, just go vote. And I would suggest to you, take a look at your sample ballot because there are a bunch of questions on there that if you look at them for the first time in the voting booth, you're going to be in there for a long time. A few of them are written in Chinese, I'm pretty sure, so it would just be wise to take your sample ballot with you and go ahead and mark it and be able to mark it off of that when you go in. I have mentioned UCF is here with us today. I've got some great news to share about the city. The Orlando Business Journal has selected the city of Orlando as one of Central Florida's 2012 Healthiest Employers for Innovation and Leadership and Wellness Programs. How about that? Saturday is the Veterans Day Parade, so November 10th, the Veterans Advisory Council will host our 13th Annual Veterans Day Parade to honor our courageous men and women of our armed forces. The parade will kick off on Orange Avenue and Robinson at 11:00 a.m. And Donna Hay, our former chair who passed away, Paul Hay's wife, will be the grand marshal. The, I know that Commissioner Linham is going to mention this, but I will just mention also that it's that time of year when the Rattlers and Wildcats get together. Okay, then I won't say anything else about it.
No, you go ahead, no, no. I'm gonna watch you straddle the fence again.
All right. So the 33rd Annual Florida Blue, Florida Blue Florida Classic with Florida A&amp;M versus Bethune-Cookman will be played on Saturday, November 17th, and it is recognized as the most preeminent and largest sporting event held between African, or traditionally African-American colleges with attendance, I think half the time, there's more people in the parking lot than actually in the game.
What, 100,000 in the city?
100,000 here. And then finally, on community events, I want to mention Light Up Orlando, Friday, November 30th, between 4:00 and 10:00, we'll have our Holiday Lights Orlando event at Lake Yola Park, not in front of City Hall, at Lake Yola Park. And we will have fun festivities and we will have the WKMG Local 6 Morning Team as we light our Christmas tree. I want to mention two items on our agenda. We have three small business assistance program agreements to support our entrepreneurs in our community. Representatives from two of them are here. Nona Blue Modern Tavern is getting assistance with Impact Bees to open a new casual restaurant in the Lake Nona Village Place, and somebody representing them is here. Go ahead and stand up and we'll get a... And then Ability Wood Flooring is getting a reimbursement for facade improvements to provide new windows, doors, awnings, shingles, painting, and signage. Are you here as well? And the last thing I want to mention is Saturday, November 24th, that is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, is Small Business Saturday, and that day falls between Black Friday and Cyber Monday and is dedicated to supporting our small businesses. And we have been a proud supporter of our small business community with our Buy Local program, and I would encourage everybody to go out and make Saturday, the 24th, the biggest day of the year for our small businesses. I know I walked the length of Edgewater Drive last year on Small Business Saturday and visited every small business. So Commissioners, I would encourage you to visit some of the small businesses in your district on the 24th. With that, we will go to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of the members of council an opportunity, as I did, to comment on things that are important in the district or issues from the consent agenda. We rotate who goes first, and today it is Commissioner Tony Ortiz, District 2.
Thank you, sir. I just want to remind everybody, I know that you already mentioned this, but it's our duty. Let's go and vote tomorrow, those of us that have not voted. And in lieu of the commitments that some of us have today, I'm just going to go ahead and hold my comments till next city council.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll take Commissioner Ortiz's time. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I do want to mention just a couple of things that will happen between now and the next meeting that, I wanted to make sure they get said. One is that we're making a change to our long-awaited single-stream recycling, and those in District 3, we will have an opportunity to have a meeting this Thursday evening to learn the details about that. So I know that the rest of the meetings are also on the city website, so please get a chance to get any questions, so please attend, right Rick? All right. And the most important thing that happens every November is the Boone-Edgewater game is this weekend. And so once again, Edgewater will get a chance to retain the barrel. The, I want to mention it because Old Florida National Bank has locations both near Boone and near Edgewater, and they have decided to do a special canned food drive to raise 5,000 cans of food by the students during this special opportunity, and they're going to offer that to the Christian Service Center, but the main thing is it's going to go to families in need. So the school that raises the most canned food will get $1,500 to go back to their school foundation. So I want to mention that to you because I think that's an important thing for our community to get involved as we think of those that are, have challenges during this holiday season. And the only item I want to mention also is on C-8, which is the facade grant. Thank you very much for Ability Flooring, I appreciate what y'all be doing over there. And that's a good opportunity for us to kind of help you. And again, the small business facade grant really is one of those things that I think we continue to, promotes jobs, it promotes everything that we do on, for the city council. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 4, Commissioner Sheehan.
Mayor, I will hold my comments in the interest of time and encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Linham.
Well, I want to know which team you're pulling for this year?
Can't you tell from the tie?
Look, when you have multiple colors, you know, hey, you know what's going on here, don't you? I can't wait to make comments, but I will hold my comments till the next council meeting. But let me see that tie again. Looks like UCF to me, a gator hair, but it...
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ings?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that the 2012 red tie basketball showdown took place at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. The first place crowned champion was Dr. Phillips Panthers, and with MPV, MVP, and University of Memphis Commitment, Rashawn Powell. Second place was the University Cougars. And then also the inaugural District 6 Community Job Fair, Making a Difference Through Job Placement, was held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. We had over 200 people to participate in this event. We had over 20 businesses to join us. And then also, just to let you know that our District 6 Seniors Thanksgiving Concert will be held Friday, November 23rd, at El Bethel Temple of Orlando located at 3,000 Bruton Boulevard in Orlando. And it's really to honor those seniors and to give them awards for what they've done in our community. And then for the agenda item, G3, I will be voting no on this item. I'm really concerned about fairness in attaching another fee to an already paying public, and I don't think that this is completely fair as it relates with the distribution effort. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mayor, I forgot you, I am voting no on G3.
Okay. No, Commissioner Lin, Commissioner Ings, no on G3. And Commissioner Gray?
Yeah, one comment, I'd like to echo what the mayor said, and thank Bill and Bill and the folks at Bestial Concepts for investing in our community and our district. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for taking the risk with your time and your efforts and your money. So thank you very much, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. So motion to approve? Second. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, let's, without objection, recess the city council meeting, and we will convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting with the purpose of accepting meeting minutes. Is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October 10th?
So moved, second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linham. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. So without objection, we will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting, reconvene the city council meeting, and that brings us to hearings ordinances on first read. Madam Clerk, number one.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain real property generally located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Dowden Road and Randall Park Boulevard comprised of about 69.78 acres of land from Community Activity Center to office-low intensity, rezoning the same property from Community Activity Center District 201, amending the official maps of Orlando, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
A motion to approve? Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Let's move to hearings ordinances on second reading. Madam Clerk, number one.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida repealing Chapter 7 of the city code of ordinances entitled Purchasing Code in its entirety and adopting a new Chapter 7 entitled Procurement Code to provide rules and regulations regarding the procurement of goods and services, including construction and professional services by the city, providing for severability, providing for codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date.
So moved, second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner... Those opposed, motion carries. Number 2, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan by updating Figure CI14 to be entitled "City of Orlando, 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Element Capital Improvements Fund Schedule," amending policy 2.2.30 in the capital improvements element, providing for severability and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ringz, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, number 4.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to historic preservation, designating the building located at 500 South Orange Avenue as an Orlando historic landmark, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
No move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, number 4.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to historic preservation, designating the building located at 500 South Orange Avenue as an Orlando historic landmark, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
No move? Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ringz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 2, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan by updating Figure CI14 to be entitled "City of Orlando, 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Element Capital Improvements Fund Schedule," amending policy 2.2.30 in the capital improvements element, providing for severability and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ringz, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 3, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for the issuance of not-to-exceed $60 million wastewater system refunding and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2013, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding indebtedness of the city with respect to the wastewater system, financing the cost of improvements to the wastewater system, funding necessary reserves, and paying costs related thereto, providing terms upon which additional parity obligations may be issued, pledging certain net revenues of the wastewater system, and to the extent necessary, funds received from the city's utility services taxed for the payment of such bonds and additional parity obligations, providing for the rights, security, and remedies of the holders of such bonds and additional parity obligations, making other covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and providing an effective date.
No move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, number 4.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to historic preservation, designating the building located at 500 South Orange Avenue as an Orlando historic landmark, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
No move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today, November 5th, 2012. Thank you for tuning in, and thank you for joining us here in council chambers.